A, Providing Public Access to the Meeting by Telephone with Additional Access Possibilities by Video or Other Electronic Means. We are utilizing WebEx through the City's IT Department for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board of Alderman have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen to this meeting through dialing the following number: (978) 990-5298, using the password (273) 974. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. B, Providing Public Notice of Necessary Information for Accessing the Meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at www.nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call (603) (821) 2049, and they will help you connect. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting in the event, the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taking during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. All right, now we'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present, and I'm by myself.
I can hear you. Can you hear us, Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much. Alderman Cleve.
Yes, I'm home. My husband and my two greyhounds are in the house with me, but not in the room at the moment, and I can hear you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly. Does it, Alicia, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, so.
I believe you might see Alderwoman Kelly now. Alderwoman Kelly, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Yes.
Okay, I'm here. I'm alone. I need to go.
Thank you very much. Alderman Dowd.
Muted.
The WebEx seems to be having a little issue. Mine's slowed down, too. I'll come back to Alderman Dowd and continue. Alderman Karen.
I'm here, and I am alone. And I can hear you.
And I can hear you as well, Alderman Karen, thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
You're welcome.
Hello.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, I am here. I am by myself, and I am participating via phone.
Thank you very much. Alderman Lopez.
I'm here, participating via computer, and I'm alone.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza.
I'm here, and I am alone.
Thank you. I can hear you, Alderman Tenza. Can you hear the proceedings?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here. I can hear you, and I'm alone.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
I'm here. I can hear you, and I am alone.
Alderman Laws.
I am here. I can hear you, and I am alone.
Thank you. Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Harry Gathright.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear you.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here. I am alone, and I can hear you.
And I'd like to go back to Alderman Dowd. I believed he was on before.
Yes, I can hear you. I am by myself, practicing social distancing, and I guess that's it.
And I can hear you as well. Thank you. We have 13 present, Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. Is Mayor Donches with us?
Yes, Madam President.
Mayor, do you wish to address the board?
Thank you. Well, Madam President, we're now into the coronavirus crisis for a number of weeks, and the city employees are working hard to continue to deliver services to our citizens, our residents, while at the same time trying to enforce social distancing, physical distancing, by, in many cases, working remotely. Many of our city employees are working seven days a week on the coronavirus crisis, so I want to thank all of them for doing that. Right now, Nashville is in a relatively good position. We have 96 cases in Nashville. In New Hampshire, there are more than 1,000. But we see down south at the border in Massachusetts that there are many more cases than we have up here, in part because of all the measures we're taking to do the physical distancing. In addition, unfortunately, we have seven deaths in Nashville so far. Hospitals, though, are in good shape. There are about 10 positively confirmed coronavirus cases in the hospitals. However, if you know someone who or whose family has been seriously impacted by this, which I do, it really brings home that even a single case is quite a tragedy. But in any event, we are, many people in the community are contributing and working very hard to meet this crisis. For example, we have many people making masks for everyone in the community, our hospitals' first responders. I want to thank all of them. Also, over the weekend, a company by the name of So Clean from Peterborough delivered 3,000 masks to the city, one including 1,095 masks. I want to thank Jorge Ortiz, who's the Nashville resident, who's been very kind enough to make this happen. Thank you, So Clean, and thank you to Mr. Ortiz. What we have on our agenda, Madam President, the first item is the necessity of transferring another $200,000 into the coronavirus effort. As you previously recall, Madam President, the city appropriated $150,000. We have on the line Administrative Services Director Kleiner, as well as Emergency Management Director Yates, who can, in the absence of time for a committee meeting, are going to report to you regarding the need for these funds. But of the money appropriated so far, we have $13,000 left. We're seeking approval tonight, so we hope you'll suspend the rules for $200,000 more. What we need this for is for additional cleaning, which we've been doing very extensively in city buildings, but also for PPE, or personal protective equipment, masks and the like for our employees, first responders, and others, people working, even in public works, who we want to wear masks and who are delivering, picking up garbage, working on other public works duties. So in addition to that, we are the first line of defense, so to speak, with respect to the alternative care site, which is located out in Nashville South. That needs to be outfitted now with some oxygen equipment in case people need to go there and they need oxygen. Although we are being asked to front this money, the governor has assured the city both privately and all of the communities of New Hampshire publicly that FEMA and the state will reimburse us 100% with respect to any funds expended at the alternative care site. In addition, we will get at least 75% on all the money we're spending internally, the PPE and everything else that we're spending money on. So we will be reimbursed, but we do need to have money available now in order to do that. But as we discussed previously, Madam President, because we need this money very immediately, really, in order to inform the board in more detail as to the need for the money and exactly what it will be expended for, we do have Ms. Kleiner and Mr. Yates on, who will report to you regarding those issues. So in conclusion on that item, I'm asking the board to suspend the rules and pass R20027 tonight, and so that we can proceed with our coronavirus efforts. Also, I wanted to address, Madam President, two other items that are on the agenda. The next one is R2029. This is just on for first reading, no need to act on this tonight, but we're proposing that various federal funds be accumulated into what we're calling the Coronavirus Impact Fund, principally CDBG money, as well as money in the existing revolving loan fund. And this would be a $1.2 million fund, which would be used to help our struggling small businesses and our struggling nonprofits. We are suggesting that the average grant or loan would be in the amount of about $25,000 grants to the nonprofits and loans to small businesses. We just need to take a drive down Main Street or anywhere else in the city to see how many small businesses are not operating as a result of the crisis and as a result of the closure orders, anything from hair salons to restaurants to any personal service business. These businesses are going to need help recovering, so again, this is, the Coronavirus Impact Fund is designed to help them, but of course, I assume you'll refer that to a committee, and we will discuss the details with the committee. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention R20028, which would authorize the city to enter into a development agreement for the development of the school street parking lot into 150 units of housing. This would provide a boost, a big boost, for city and the downtown, our economy, as we emerge from the coronavirus crisis. It would bring in $900,000 of cash initially, and with 150 units, would generate probably about $300,000 a year in tax revenue, in addition, providing hundreds of patrons for downtown businesses who are going to need help in the coming months and years. And in addition, will result in the leasing of evening parking spaces for several, which will bring several hundred thousand dollars, or 150 to 200,000 dollars of revenue to the city on an annual basis, plus the property taxes. Now, this, I know, will be referred to committee. I'm sure the board will want to go through the details carefully, which I'm sure you'll do, but I wanted to let you know that this is one of the projects we're pursuing in order to help build a stronger economy coming out of the coronavirus crisis. Beyond that, Madam Chair, it is nice to see everyone here remotely, even though we can't get together. I'm sure many people on the board and throughout the community are stir-crazy, have cabin fever from staying at home, but we're advising people that you should get out and exercise, but still stay six feet apart from your neighbors if you can, wear masks, and help us to control the spread of the virus. Again, we have 96 cases in Nashville, could be far, far more, and it's as a result of these measures that there hasn't been further spread. So with that, Madam President, I will conclude, and just thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Hearing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of March 24, 2020, and March 31, 2020, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring Only Procedural Actions and Written Reports from Liaisons.
Communication's been received from Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Director, regarding Resolution R2027.
There being no objection, I will accept this communication and place it on file.
Communication's been received from Carla Laclerc, regarding imposing a moratorium on small cells and other wireless infrastructure permits, process, and deployment until the COVID-19 emergency is over.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items to be acted upon this evening. The public access to contemporaneously listen to this meeting through dialing the following number: (978) 990-5298, using the password (273) 974. Public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call (603) (821) 2049, and they will help you connect. You may also submit your comments via email, which will be accepted and placed on file with the minutes of the meeting. Please email your comments to boa@nashuanh.gov. Communications requiring Final Approval?
Communication's been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding emergency PO request: $94,400 for change order two for 2019 asphalt testing from SW Coal Engineering, Inc.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for approval to authorize the emergency purchase order request for $94,400 for change order two for 2019 asphalt testing from SW Coal. By roll call, please.
On that motion?
Yes, I have a question.
Alderman Jettie.
So could someone explain why this is required? What is the emergency that is causing us to increase the purchase of this asphalt testing?
Would you like me to answer that?
Did someone speak up?
Yes, this is Jim Donches. Would you like me to answer?
Certainly, Mayor.
Alderman Jettie, it's not an emergency. What we, a program that we instituted along with the paving plan of action that has been in effect for several years now, was to test the quality of the asphalt, both at the site and at the plant where it's being made, because we were finding that some paving projects were not, the quality of the paving, the asphalt that was laid down was not of the quality that it was supposed to be, and not of a quality that would last and get the most for the dollars we're spending. So last year, we had a contract with the same company, and they did the asphalt testing. They did a good job. So what this is, is simply a change order which would extend their contract by one year, so they would continue as they did last year to do the testing this year. And since this is an amendment to a contract that has already been approved by the board, it comes before you in this form.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, so the labeling of emergency purchase order request is really misleading. It's really not accurate. It's just a regular.
If there's an emergency, it's that they would like to engage them right away to do the testing because the paving has already begun.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cleve. Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes. Did you not hear me?
I did not.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you very much. Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
I think I've seen a couple hands raised, and evidently you're not seeing them, so...
I'm not seeing hands raised.
Not now, but before, so I would just be more on a watch for...
I was looking. I didn't see any raised. Good to note, thank you. Madam Clerk.
I was on mute, my apologies. A communication has been received from Larry D. Gudrew, CEO of Penachuck Corporation, regarding the annual meeting of sole shareholder and proxy statement. Alderman Laws.
Can you hear me? Okay. I move to elect the following individuals to the Penachuck Corporation Board of Directors until their successors are elected and qualified: James P. Dory, Elizabeth A. Dunn, H. Scott Fleagle, and Debra Novotny, for three-year terms, and authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card the vote of the sole shareholder to the Board of Directors of Penachuck Corporation by roll call.
To elect the individuals aforementioned? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Dave, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, I said yes.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
I can, thank you. Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the April 7 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the April 9, 2020, Penachuck Special Water Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
None.
Unfinished business ordinances?
There are none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R2027, relative to the transfer of $200,000 from Department 192 Debt Service Account 75200, interest expense, into Fund 6500, Property and Casualty Fund Account 68360, Loss Prevention.
Thank you. So I guess my point would be to look for, to suspend the rules to allow, excuse me, for a second reading? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion for that?
Yeah, Madam President, I'll make the motion, suspend the rules, and call for a second reading on R20027.
Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
I have a question, and I wasn't being called on. Madam President?
Alderman Clemmons, we're in the middle of a vote.
This is Alderman Lopez, but you wouldn't call it me, so it's a point of order. When do we actually get to sponsor this?
I didn't call for sponsors.
Noticed.
Sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes, I can't hear you, bud.
Alderman Laws, thank you. Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
I don't know if I heard Alderman Schmidt.
I think she was muted. Nope, I'm here. Can you get me?
Could you record your vote for a second reading, please? Was that a yes?
Yes, it's a yes.
We have 13 yeses and zero nays, President Wiltshire.
Do I have a motion for final passage?
Madam President, Alderman O'Brien, I would like to make a motion to final passage of R2027.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? I don't see any hands up. Okay, seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
We have 13 yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries, Resolution 20027 is duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R. 2028 authorizing the city to enter into a master development agreement with Lansing Melbourne Group, LLC.
Are there additional sponsors? Seeing none, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
Alderman Wiltshire, there were several people with their hands up. Yeah. You ought to do it by roll call.
Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly?
Alderman O'Brien would like to sponsor.
Alderman Harriet Gathright would like to sponsor.
Alder, Alderman Clay would like to sponsor.
We all said, given its first reading, I'll assign it to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 2029 relative to accepting CDBG funding under the 2020 CARES Act, amending the FY 2020 HUD Annual Action Plan to reprogram existing CDBG funding and create a COVID-19 impact program.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Kelly?
Alderman O'Brien would like to sponsor.
Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay?
Harriet Gathright.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen?
Alderman Schmidt?
Alderman Schmidt, anyone else?
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws? And myself.
Alderman Tenza.
Yeah.
Alderman Tenza, okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances?
There is none.
Period for general public comment? There is none. Remarks by members of the board?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, did you call my name? Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Madam President. I just, the, I, I just want to thank everybody for all that they're, that they're doing here. The city has been extraordinary, from the citizens to our workers, and truthfully, there's just too many to name by profession and definitely by name. But I did want to state that I attended a state meeting today, and one of the things that I found was quite interesting was that we have 763 ventilators in hospitals that exclude pediatric and infant, and we're only using 68 of them at this time. They, they found that by using the BiPAP, I guess they call them, and the CPAPs, that they're having a better overall outcome, I guess, by using those things instead of ventilators. So I thought that was really good news. The thing that I found quite disturbing was nursing homes and home care. We've been paying a lot of attention to hospitals, as well we should, and first responders, but our nursing homes are in desperate needs of smocks and masks, and that's throughout the state. I tried calling a couple of the nursing homes today and I didn't get through to find out what their needs were, and I'm sure there are other people that are doing much more than, than that. And our home healthcare workers seem to be kind of at the bottom of the barrel when it comes out to handing out the PPE. So if anybody knows of any of these needs and so on, you know, try to see if you can help them as well as all the others. But I want to commend our city and the mayor and everybody else, our, our public health people and so on, everybody's doing phenomenal job, and I'm proud to be here in Nashua, I truly am.
Thank you, Alderman Clay, anyone else?
Yes, Alderman Jettie? So, we, we know that, that there are many people in the city that have been really helping out during this crisis, but I wanted to make special mention of the United Way. Mike Affleberg and his many volunteers have developed and implemented a plan to provide food for students and, and others, senior citizens who can't get to the grocery store and other people who are in need, they've, they've developed and implemented this plan to, to help those people throughout the city. And all of that would not be possible, of course, without United Ways, many donors. And so I, I want to thank the United Way and everyone connected to them, and encourage people to check out their website, the United Way Nashville website, for more information on how, how you can access food or volunteer or donate. And, and one more item, Madam President, you know, we seem to be, we seem to be getting the handle of this, of this WebEx way of having meetings, and I'm wondering when, when do you see us being able to have committee meetings again? Because there are things coming up that the committees need to deal with.
I, I think, Alderman Jettie, we, we've started to use WebEx on some of our subcommittees, our committee meetings. I know that Alderman Dowd has held budget meetings, so, you know, I, I think if there's something on your agenda that we can take a look at whether it's time sensitive or, I think we are getting the hang of this, so I agree, we should, we should start holding more committee meetings if possible.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, just a couple of statements and then a couple of questions for the mayor. The first is, I, I don't know if people are aware that Batell from Ohio has, has been providing Massachusetts with a capability of disinfecting masks so they can be reused. I have a lot of experience with that company, they do a great deal of Department of Defense work, amazing company, they have more patterns than most people have grains of sugar. It's, it's, so I feel that that's probably something that could really help with the PPE until we catch up. The other thing is, on Monday, being the logistics person I am, with the wind and the rain, I figured that Market Basket would be pretty much empty, it was, and I was able to do my shopping with only a few other people in the store, which changed as I was leaving. But I just wanted to, I thank the young people that are working there. They're working very hard and they're putting themselves out there, and I think that sometimes they get overlooked, and I just wanted to put a thanks out to all of them that are putting in the time and, and, because obviously food's a very important asset. For the mayor, two questions. One, the state received a, a shipment of, of masks and they were going to be put for distribution. I'm wondering how many of them actually found their way to Nashua? And the other thing is, the fast test machines that Abbott makes, another great company, by the way, I know we were, this week, we're supposed to get the cartridges to make them work, otherwise they're kind of useless. And have any of those machines found their way to Nashua?
Mayor?
Yes, thank you. The question on the masks, we are, we have gotten masks and PPE from the state. Those requests need to go in through the, what's called the State EOC, and from there we get various, we've got a couple of deliveries of masks and other protective equipment. The exact number, I'm not sure, but I can work, I can get with, with Justin Cates and get you that answer. With respect to the Abbott tests, those are, there is no question that we need more testing. It would be very helpful, for example, the hospitals are very frustrated that they can't get everyone coming into the hospital tested with a test like the Abbott test, which takes a half hour for the result. That way, they would be able to greatly reduce the amount of procedure they have to go through with respect to each patient. Now they have to treat every patient coming in as though they might be coronavirus positive. If they have these tests available, they could test everyone and probably rule out 99% of the people or a very, very high percentage, and therefore could treat them with much less, with much, much less stringent protocols or procedures, and this would save them a lot of trouble and a lot of time and a lot of money. However, these Abbott tests are not available, and what has happened is that the Abbott Corporation, Abbott Labs, I guess it's called, has decided to distribute these tests through CVS. And those two companies, rather than the government, is deciding where the tests are available. So in Lowell, there is a, a CVS that is offering tests at the, in the parking lot at the Lowell Cinemas near the highway, that multiplex there. And if you meet certain criteria, you can get a quick result test. But basically, you need to be either a first responder or working, or living in nursing or that kind of thing, be, show some kind of risk factor and have, and report symptoms, and you have to be a Massachusetts resident. We checked out to see if New Hampshire residents could go down there, Public Health did that, and the answer was no. But the, the, the fact that the nation hasn't taken control of this and ordered the production of tests like these on a very, much larger scale is a problem, and the lack of testing is frustrating. Bottom line answer is no, that we don't have. Getting an echo.
That's me, I'm sorry.
That is.
Hold on. There.
But I couldn't stop, Alderman.
Pardon me?
I didn't stop.
Sorry.
Can you put it on mute?
So the, back to the, the Abbott Lab test, so they, those are not available in New Hampshire at all. It would be great if they were, and if they were widely available, it would be a great help. The, but I did have a return question, which was, Alderman Dowd, you mentioned a company that could do the re, the cleaning of PPE, what was the name of the company?
Batell.
Where are they located?
They're out in, in Ohio, and, and they're the ones that are doing that massive testing in Massachusetts. They set up that, they're doing like 50,000 masks a day, they have, they have the, I don't know what the technology is, and, but it, it sterilizes the mask, the mask can be used over 40 times. This is, I'm quite sure yet, but.
I will, I'll definitely have Justin Cates contact you and sort of get the details and begin working.
Okay, the other thing is.
Get some answers to how many masks have been, have come through the state.
All right, great, and if, if, another thing, if you could give me a call tomorrow, if you have a chance, there was three people that called me today questioning what's going on with the energy program at the two high schools, so we could talk about that tomorrow.
Things been kind of on, delayed as a result of the, the obvious crisis, but we should get that back on track.
Okay.
Anyone else have any remarks?
It's Alderman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some of the comments about continually impressed I am by our community and everybody stepping up and doing what they can to get through this, so I appreciate that, everything from daily calls, City Hall, and working through with businesses. And we're all stepping up, so I appreciate that. And then I just wanted to comment, maybe I should have made that committee, but we will have a meeting of the Human Affairs Committee next week, and I think we're still working through the logistics of how to do a public hearing, so we'll post that as soon as we have the date.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly, anyone else?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to acknowledge some of the community members who've been doing a lot of work to try to help the community with this crisis, particularly Lathamandipudi, Meg Doucette, Trishana Kelly, there's Lee, there have been a lot of people that have been working to create cloth masks, and we have actually been making sure that some of the residential programs in the city are taken care of. So we provided some to National Clean Kitchens, Food Shelters, we got some for Delaney's House and Harbor Homes Programs, Keystone, the group homes, so we have been working on that front. And then additionally, I really want to draw attention to Make-It Labs, who've been doing an outstanding job of creating face shields, they've been connecting with businesses that are donating plastic, they've been working on designs, they've been re-tasking their laser cutter, and they've really become a regional hub for a lot of other makers. So not only are they helping the city of Nashville, but they're multiplying their effort in the way the makers can, and they're engaging basically anybody who has a 3D printer and link up with Make-It Labs and, and they'll take all the help that they can get. So I wanted to recognize those two efforts particularly. I did want to just make a comment to the mayor that it has been brought up several times, it might be a good time to try looking at paving some of the major roads. Do realize that GPW workers can come down with COVID-19 as well, but it would be good to amend any plans as appropriate or make a comment as to why that's not possible, because I've heard it stat pressure a lot. That's all I have.
Is there anyone else who has remarks?
Yes. This is Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Thank you. As some folks know, I ha, I haven't been, I'm sure we're all in the same boat, but me more than others, haven't been thrilled about everything that's been going on with the COVID-19 stay-at-home orders and such. However, I wanted to point out something that our citizens should be listening to our local leaders, Mayor Donches and Governor Sununu, as opposed to some of the things that are coming out from our president. Mayor Donches and Governor Sununu know a lot better about what is going on and what is the best things that we can do locally to protect ourselves. So I just want people to understand that when you are listening to the national news and seeing the president and things like that, please just keep in mind that, you know, we are, we here have a responsibility to protect the citizens of Nashua and New Hampshire, and our local government knows better how to do that than anybody in Washington DC. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I, I hope that everybody is staying healthy and safe, and hopefully we will come out of this sooner rather than later. But again, we have to listen to our local leaders to best do that. Thank you.
Anyone else have remarks? Seeing none, I would like to make a few.
Hello, can you hear me?
Alderman Lu?
Sorry, I just wanted to let the group know that I've actually been here since the beginning of the meeting. I, I've just had like all kinds of problems. I could see you, and I could see myself at the meeting, I saw my name on the roster, but I didn't realize also that we couldn't call in by phone tonight. but I didn't realize also that we couldn't call in by phone tonight. So, yeah, I called in and I spoke with Jim, and he said, no, you can't call in tonight. So I wanted to make you aware that I've made my best efforts to get to the meeting, and Madam Chairman, it looks like, it looks to me like there are call-in members, so, and you look as though you skeptical that, about not being able to call in.
Yes, I am, I know that we couldn't call in, and we do have a couple callers tonight, so
Okay.
I'm not sure if there is a restriction in the number of lines we have.
All right.
IT department.
I will put a lot more, I'll get ready, I'll make sure I'm set up for the next one. Is this a new, is this a new platform that we're using, WebEx?
No.
Or is it the same one we used last time?
It's the same one.
Okay, all right, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to say that, you know, I appreciate everyone's patience and everyone's getting themselves set up and to the meetings, it's really appreciated, and I know it's not all that easy for everyone to do, but taking the time and, and doing it is, is really appreciated. I also wanted to wish good health and, and safety to all of you, my, my fellow colleagues, all your families and all the citizens of Nashua, I think everyone's done a tremendous job helping each other out, it's something we've never seen, but I think everyone has risen to the occasion and, and really been there for each other, so thank you all for that. Committee announcements. No committee announcements? Okay.
Sorry, on mute. We do have a budget meeting on the 16th, this is Thursday at 7:00, and it will be covering all city revenues. So it's a, that's a whole part of the budget, if you want to be able to comment on it. Information will be going out from Donna on the meeting notice, so.
Okay.
All right.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to make a motion that the April 14th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yay.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.